Okay, you ready, Dawn?
Evening, sir.
Okay. Look at the minutes, please. Any corrections, additions, or do I hear a motion for approval?
I'm ready for the minutes.
I'll second. And moved in second. Any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Dawn, I have a United States Department of Commerce US Census for 2020. It's L U C A. Did we, uh, have we been participating in that?
No.
Okay. Yeah, it's just a reminder, they sent it one time to us.
It wasn't tax abatement.
We've done it.
Nothing too big in there.
Okay. I'll see if maybe the President's office just goes up.
We have an ad, or an ad, yeah, an ad, I guess, for board appointments that Dawn put together. Is there any questions about it, or comments, changes?
It looks fine to me.
I'll read it aloud for you so you can hear it. It says, "Lincoln County needs you. Would you be willing to serve your community by serving on one of the county-appointed boards? The following board appointments will expire on February 28th of '18. Rural Fire District, one physician available in each fire district. Residents must reside within their respective fire district. Barnard Beverly, First Rural, Hunter Rural, Stoben Grove Rural. Lincoln County Repeater Board, three physicians available. Lincoln County Hospital Board of Trustees, one physician available. Lincoln County General Transportation Bus Board, two positions available. Crime Victims Restitution Board, one position. Lincoln County Preservation Board, three positions. Is it Delia, is that how you pronounce it? Delia Pitterd Inheritance Guideline Committee, one position. Children's Healthcare Endowment Fund, one position. Windpower Economic Benefit Fund Board, one position. Anyone interested in serving on any board is requested to submit their interest in writing by identifying the board of interest's name and contact information and deliver to the following address by January 15th, 2018." And then it's the clerk's office.
And we can set that date. I just kind of threw something in there.
I did have one question. What are we going to do about the people that currently sit? Do they need to reapply, or?
I feel like we need to send them notice.
Yeah. I thought I was thinking that.
Or tell them or something.
If they're currently there, we ought to at least send them a notice to tell them that, you know, they're up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Because a lot of them may not realize that they're, it's their position that's up, so.
And I guess I think we ought to say in there, if they're interested in continuing, they need to let us know.
Yeah.
Through the same channel that anyone else would. Yeah, that sounds good.
But I think a personal letter to them would be sufficient.
Yeah.
Thank them for their service so far.
They may not realize that it's their position that's up. Otherwise, I have no issue with them.
When do you want to actually run the ad? Do you want to wait until January and when, like, the first couple we send, January?
We don't make those appointments till the 1st of March, do we, at the end of February?
End of February.
It's, they expire on the 28th, so.
I would say let's wait until after the holidays.
I would say January.
And then can we change the cutoff line to February 1st? That gives them 28 days.
Oh, yeah, or I think February the 15th.
That's fine.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's better.
I think they need as much as they can.
I would say probably better run it twice, too.
Okay. So, like, the first team is in January and then we'll change the cutoff to February 15?
I believe that's.
Yes.
And then I'll send a letter out to all the people that are expiring in the first week of January as well.
Yeah.
Both papers, please.
They could, they might miss it, you know, if we only get it one week.
Okay, then we have Elizabeth Sheldon said she'd be willing to serve on the Rec Commission
I would move to ask the city to accept Elizabeth Sheldon for the Rec Commission.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Is, is that a county-appointed board seat?
Well, it's actually a city board. They let us recommend someone. There is a county physician on the board. They call it a county physician, but they have the final say, so.
Okay.
It's just a recommendation, that's what it is.
Is it on three-year term?
Two and four.
Two-year term, yeah. She took over for someone, didn't she, or something? She'd been on there.
Is that what this is?
Yeah. You know, but she's a school nurse, right?
Yeah, I know who she is.
Any other questions?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Don't need to sign.
I think so. Maybe on that. Maybe there is.
I believe there is.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, there is.
There's all.
Yeah, all of them.
Dawn, are these tax abatements, do they come to you first and then?
No, they go to the appraiser.
They go to the appraiser. And so on this sheet, on the form where it says clerk's control number, is that you?
Um.
Or is that?
Yeah, well, it's our identification number, but yes, it's, so, like, Rhonda will assign a number.
Once these have come to us, they've already, the appraiser has already got, validated what's on here.
They start, they start the process, then it comes to me, and then I do print orders for you guys to approve. Once you approve, then I send it to the treasurer's office.
If we don't approve, it goes to the board of tax appeals or something, right?
Yeah, some of it, I think one of them is.
For $3.80.
It's a board of tax appeals order, so.
I saw one one time under $2.
I think, yeah, I think this one, $3.80 here, this one. $2.98, there's one under $3.
Every penny counts, I guess.
David, did you have something for us?
Just real quickly.
Yes, sure.
Um, I got notification from the state the other day that, that my E M P G Emergency Management Planning Grant did get approved by the state. Again, finally received the notification order November 13th from the beginning of the year. The amount of money that I will be receiving will be $7,724. That should, in the past, it's come in, like, on the last day of the year.
$7,724.
Seven, seven, 77.4. And then also, last week, the fire chiefs had their quarterly meeting, and previously we had discussed, or you guys had asked me to discuss, um, policy pertaining to pictures while on scene with emergency services or any type of first responder for the county. Had typed this information up, had presented it to the fire chiefs, had shown Mike and Dustin also. EMS wasn't at the meeting, but they have a copy of this also. This is what the chiefs ultimately said that they were happy with. I said that I would be, present this to you guys on Monday, and they said, yes, go ahead. Again, after discussion the other night, they looked at it, looked over it, nobody came up with any questions. Again, burbage per on scene or while a first responder is on scene, that they are not allowed to take pictures. The chief or designated may appoint an on-scene responder to take pictures of the incident to be utilized within the department for training. Again, or also, um, look at the sentence. "Any of the above listed may appoint a designated to take pictures that will be used for incident documentation, accident or fire scene investigation, and medical purposes such as documenting the position of the vehicles and patients at the scene of an accident, or to document mechanism of injury for use by the receiving facility to assist in guiding treatment." So again, at the, at the bottom of the, of the form, in the second, to the bottom of the paragraph, "All photographs containing individually identifiable information are covered by Lincoln County's Health Insurance Portable, Portability and Accountability Act, HIPAA, privacy rule. It must be protected in the same manner as patient care reports and other such documentation."
Was the county health nurse present at this meeting?
No, she was not. I could send her a copy of this also.
Think she needs to, I think she needs to have a copy. We will also need to send a copy to the attorney, county attorney, and Deborah probably needs to run this through, uh.
Okay.
K Camp, K Work.
Okay.
Yeah, K Camp.
I do have some input. It's interesting, because I understand exactly what you're trying to do here. I mean, we don't need additional photography, especially of people themselves, but just this week, at the state meeting, at the county commissioners' meeting, they were talking about, get as many pictures as you can of everything from everyone. So.
But there's HIPAA stuff involved.
Well, no, I understand. I mean, you don't want that person to be identified on the, in the scene of an incident. But, for example, if you had a disaster that you showed up to, and this is exactly what we were talking about, because there was a person who spoke specifically on, you know, emergency management and disaster situations, and it was kind, that was kind of the consensus of the room, was everyone take pictures as many as you can so that you have as much documentation as possible, so that you can put together a chronological series of events and know exactly what happened. But I, I understand what you're trying to protect here. You're trying to protect the individuals themselves. So I think as long as that is understood.
But again, there's, there's, there's that fine line to where these individual first responders, again, in Hellhead County also, at the Weeland Home Explosion, there was a fire first responder, I'm not going to name the district, and I'm not going to give a name, that was taking pictures, that did not get turned into the, to the insurance adjuster or the insurance, and again, to my knowledge, that case is still in court. And again, any pictures, the county received a subpoena from one of these lawyers representing one half of these entities, and again, this first responder didn't turn that stuff in. Again, there was another example of that over at a fire north of Beverly.
So then, can this possibly relate the fact that if they're taking pictures while on duty, that they become subject to property of the county? Because.
It states that in there.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't clearly comment, okay.
Yes.
Because I think that would be important. If you were trying to decipher the details of a situation, you would want to have that documentation. I mean, I know.
Like, that's why, that's why the chief or whoever the appointed scene manager is, they can designate a person to do nothing but take pictures. They're not going into the fire, they're not having bunker gear on, or they could have bunker gear, but again.
But their primary goal.
Their primary issue or concern or appointment is to take pictures.
We're getting questions when we go into hospitals with accident victims about conditions of the cars and stuff like that, so it has, on EMS, they, they are, you know, requesting information, and if we had the pictures, just to show them the picture of the vehicle, that would make a difference to them, I think.
And again, another, another concern, over at the Beverly fire, north of Beverly, the coal fire, when it was an outbuilding, caught on fire, and, and again, one of the responders showed up on scene and, and took pictures, and neither the chief nor I knew anything about this until the fire investigator from the state sent me the fire report from that incident that said, this firefighter volunteered, I have camera pictures, I have this, I have this. Why weren't, why wasn't the chief, and I'm not saying I have to be notified, but why wasn't the on-scene chief notified that, that he has this capability to do this, and, and that information was never related to the chief? And, and so that's what we're trying to eliminate. Again, people on the back of fire trucks, Terry's been on the fire, Al Joe's been a fireman also for the county. There's been people out there standing on the back of the truck with their cell phone just taking pictures. That's not right. That's not why we're out there.
That was kind of the last thing I was thinking about when I was on the back of the fire truck. I was hanging on.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the original implementation of this was when the wind farm was.
It was.
Being constructed, and a crane fell over, and one of the first responders at that time was out there taking pictures.
And sending it out on.
On social media.
Yeah, social media. And that's where we, that's when we.
Email got a little cranky by that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, they got, they were not, they were not happy.
It's, it's really hard when you have an incident, you appear on scene, and the video appears 10 minutes later.
Yeah.
That should not be the, the firefighter's primary focus, is to make sure that the public is informed of what's happened.
I agree with the documentation, but it needs to be done, or it needs to be recorded.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how you can, um, how, how that pertains to volunteers.
You're responding for the county, though.
Yeah, I think that.
They're a volunteer first responder for the county. Anytime you hop on that truck, or in that, that EMS unit, or, or law enforcement unit, you're, you're responding as an employee of the county.
You're covered by work comp and liability, so at that point, if you're responding, you're...
It just gives the fire chief some teeth that if, if they want to deal with the situation, they have the ability to do so.
So, yeah, I guess, David, I, yeah.
I'll communicate with LaDonna.
LaDonna, and then send, send a copy of that to Jennifer, too, please.
Yes, sir. Yep, just wanted to keep you.
And I'll look it over a little closer, too, so we can.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept these tax abatements?
I would say move.
Their total's $7, $798.08. I'll second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Morning.
Morning.
Thank you.
I don't know if you guys, but whatever, we did change our official meeting place to down here.
We're aware now.
Sorry.
Well, I didn't. I thought, well, I better tell them for the next time you come not to look for us upstairs. In the event that this room is needed for a larger group, we'll go back upstairs.
I guess we're ready for you, Mike.
Well, I just had several issues that you just want to be aware of. Number one, we got our major sewer problem fixed in jail. So I think all of the old 1930 sewer pipe now has been replaced underneath the basement floor, so it's all PVC, so we should not have any problems in the future. So that problem solved. A couple other things. One, I'm putting out bids for new patrol pickup for January, for January, and we got one bid from Marshall on it. $2,018 Ram Police Package, and they get a pretty good deal, like, I think it's around $28,000. With the government contract, they knocked off $10,000, so we're saving $10,000 on that.
For what?
Yeah. So we'll see how many other bids we get. I don't think we can get anything lower than that, but we'll wait and see.
We won't want to do anything until after the 1st of the year.
Correct. Correct. Be in January sometime.
Yes.
And they have a 90-day delivery on that, so.
Is that your capital outlay fund, or is that?
It's a special vehicle.
Special vehicle?
Fund 50.
I'm sorry?
It's Fund 50.
Fund 50.
And also the white board. The old 2, is that 99? 2099.
Yeah, it was bought used long company.
Yeah, so we'll get, and my pickup, we'll use it for a spare. Uh, tasers. We were notified that affected January 1st. The tasers that my deputies have, they will no longer be able to repair or send any parts because they're going to the two new models which we have, and we're going to have to go ahead and purchase some, and they're not cheap, so we'll probably do that after January 2nd, maybe not, maybe before January.
Let's see where.
See where, see where our budget.
I think it's an important tool for you, so I don't think we're going to.
Well, it keeps our deputies from getting injured, or the people out there dealing with tools.
Might keep them from having to use their other tool, too.
It's pretty utility.
Yeah. I've never had one, but I've seen one done.
Well.
I don't want to have one.
I can recall at least three times when I was called out, we had a disturbance of fights or whatever it was with the deputies, and a taser was deployed, and once somebody's tased, they would put up much of a fight. That's all we had.
Occupancy?
Six. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six.
All of ours except for one. All of the Mars except for one.
And do we have any out? Do we have any farmed out?
Nope. Got two females and four males.
When you were having the sewer issues, did you have to farm them out, or were you able to continue?
We moved the one from the single cell to the regular pod, just monitor.
What about a jailer? Another jailer? No?
We got a promising applicant last week.
Did you?
I move for executive session to discuss non-elected personnel for the purpose of employee discipline.
With?
Okay. Okay. Sorry, let me get the... Okay, so good. Justification will be the non-resigned personnel. And, hello?
Is that clock correct, then?
Aye, go.
Uh, it's two minutes off, but we can go by that clock.
Five, five minutes, should be fine.
Who are we, who's going to be in?
The commissioners and the sheriff, and the under sheriff.
I'll second.
Been moved in second to go into exact session with the sheriff and the under sheriff. For how, for five minutes, was that right?
Five minutes, yes.
Five minutes? Dawn, you going to?
Was there a second?
Yeah, Terry seconded.
I'll set my thing on my phone.
Okay.
I forgot to sign, though, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dawn, do you have anything for us?
I?
Have you given us everything you have?
I've given you everything I have.
I guess we are probably ready for Deborah. She wants to come down early. Don, as she's coming. Where, didn't you say you were going to send out some requests for ambulance billing?
Um, we haven't got to that point yet.
Okay. All right. I just wondered where we were at in that process.
No place I don't think. I think Brett was gonna get her some names, and I'm not really sure, I haven't followed up.
Yeah, okay. Well, I can ask her.
Don, I have a question as a follow-up from a couple weeks ago. You had accused me of hacking into the system. I'd like to know where we are with the validation on that, since you said you called Nextech. And I would like to see some paperwork that backs that up, because if I'm going to be alleged to be doing things like this, I want to see some paperwork for it.
Okay, Nextech says that they would come out when they get done identifying a resolution to our network issues.
Network issues, but are, are they gonna validate whether or not the system was hacked, as you alleged that I was a part of?
You know, Alexis, I think that I've talked to you about that twice now in a meeting.
You talked, two weeks ago, or three weeks ago?
And that they know that our, our system has been hit on, but there was no breach. So, I don't think that I need to tell you that over and over and over again.
I would just like some validation from an actual source of authority on the issue, not your opinion. That's all.
Come on, closer. Okay, Deborah.
Okay.
Where do we want to start?
It's up to you. Which one do you want to start with?
Well, the ambulance is on the top.
Okay. I can switch that one. I have the praiser on top.
Oh, well.
I'm good with that.
M comes before a P.
That's fine.
I, you needed to be in my alphabetical listing class.
Well, we'll be alphabetical. All right.
I just talked to Don about this, supervises patient billing down there as one of the essential functions.
Mm-hmm.
I understand that he's responsible for getting us the information, right?
Yes.
To, to you.
Yes.
And I guess while we're here on this subject, is this becoming overwhelming due to the new regulations that are coming up?
It is. It's hard. I called that lady. I need to call her back and see what we can set up.
Okay.
Do you have any idea what that kind of service is gonna cost?
Nothing. I don't know. It's a per run is what he, is what he told me.
Per run, percentage.
Because that's who they utilize in Mitchell County. And he said that he felt like if that's where we thought we needed to be, he said that he thought that it would transition okay, because he made it that in Mitchell County.
About how many hours?
I don't know.
You don't, how many hours?
I can't, without going up and looking, so...
Okay, all right.
But, so that would need some rewardage there.
Yeah.
We visited, Brett and I visited a little bit. He said that, you know, he knows that there's a lot of things that need to be updated, and that was, that was, he said, however, we wanted to reward that.
Probably should be more something like assessed with the patient billing.
Um, well, basically what you're saying he's doing now is logging the information. He's logging the, for patient billing and fees and receipting.
But if you have questions, you're contacting him, right? So, he's, he does assess them, or that he...
Yes, when I have questions, yeah. And I am, I'm not sure how, I kind of want to visit with her and see what all it's gonna, and maybe we can come up with some better verbiage for that. But, yeah, assessed would be okay, unless you have a different order.
The, if you go down a few lines, scheduled member of the ambulance crew, a minimum of twice per week, is that happening now?
Well, as I had said before, we hadn't updated the job description, so that has been there since...
That's what it was when we had a full-time director.
The last three directors, and as Brett said, you know, that's up to you guys how you want to reward that. But he said, obviously, that should be changed. He said, but that's how the board decides to word that.
And she was taking an eight-hour or 12-hour shift. The...
Yeah, 12, she was a 12-hour shift.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Because the two before him took 12, and the one before that took eight.
I would say it needs to be something like assumed duty, the scheduled member as needed.
That's good, too.
I think there are weeks he covers two shifts or more, but...
Well, I think the bottom line is, we're questioning, is this a full-time or part-time position? Because I, you must have updated this a little bit, because I think the last one that I received months back said that it was a full-time position.
Could have.
So, what we're getting at is, you know, what do we want? Can a full-time person also assume the duties of the billing if they're not going to be mandated to take two 24-hour shifts in an ambulance?
Probably not. I doubt it.
Someone that's actually educated?
I doubt it.
I was like a...
I don't, I, I will be honest, as the person who's doing it, I know what it's like, and I know how overwhelming it is. I just don't think that we're gonna find someone that will be able or want to take that task on as well. I think for us, like many counties, the best thing that we can do is go to a billing service. I really do.
Well, I think the, the technicalities of the billing anymore has gotten to the point where...
It's...
Because of...
And I don't know, maybe, maybe...
Government healthcare.
I don't know. You guys have to decide what you want.
I think we need to pursue it and see where we're at, where we're at.
I think we need a price to look at. What is it costing? What are you billing to our ambulance department now out of the clerk's office versus what we will be paying to a third-party company?
But they also, they also may be able to collect more money because they...
They would be able to collect more money.
They don't understand the I C U ten and all that stuff, or...
But as for the job description?
I think it should say assumed duty, the scheduled member is needed. You know, with the 24, with the 24-hour shift.
Can we change it to once per week instead of twice, so that it aligns with what's happening now? And then if that needs adjusted later, you can...
Or we could say once per week or as needed?
Yeah.
That would kind of hit both.
Instead of twice per week, once per week.
Yeah.
I don't, at least...
Well, I think, and then the other part is that you may not take a 24-hour shift. You may need to take a couple 12s or something.
Like daylight or some...
When, Tommy's busy.
Once per week or as needed?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Looking at the monthly schedule, he's, he's covering no problem, or... I do take, occasionally I will take an night shift. But if I do, it's usually because he has more than one shift that week, so...
I think some of these can be combined, like at the top under essential functions, it has plans, directs, and spics, and exercises, general supervision over personnel, and then under marginal functions at the bottom, it says...
There's some repetition, yes.
Yeah, it says oversees continuing education and recertification of department personnel. Those can be combined into one.
Yes.
That doesn't necessarily need to be, I, I think we can do that on a few of these line items here.
Do I have the part of the marginal functions?
Just add that into the overs, you know, supervision of personnel.
There's a lot of, like, repetition, and that, yes, could be kind of combined. And then there's some, like...
Like prepares department, prepares and administers department budget, purchases supplies and equipment as necessary. Those are two separate that can be combined, I think. If, if you don't want to change the format, I think you could just combine them. And if you do want to change the format, we could just have headings like personnel, financial...
I would rather not change the format, because I'm gonna have to change every single one.
That's fine. I would just combine some of those.
But I, there's some combining that could be done to make it a little easier, and some rewardage, just so that they're all more consistent.
Under education, on the back page, um, I mean, this is not my field of knowledge, but it's my understand, my understanding that an EMT is your basic level.
Yes.
And so then after that, you have an EMT-A. And then there's something else, and then a paramedic.
Yes.
So, I'm wondering, do, do we want to have some kind of requirement that's slightly above the very bottom line? I know that sometimes in the future, we may be desperate for someone who is qualified above that level, but...
To be honest, one of the things that he questioned was where it said one to three years of experience.
Yes.
As an EMT. He said that he just, he said, really, do you really want something that's only been EMT?
With one year of experience at the lowest level of certification.
And he said, again, it's a board decision what they want to put in the job description, but he said that he would question that as well.
I would say take out the one, the three-years experience at least. And then, I don't know that it necessarily, I don't know that the education level has to be equivalent to an actual paramedic, but I would, I would say that you could go above your entry-level EMT certification. I mean, I think it's, the responsibility is there.
Several years ago, when we ran the process of looking for a director, about 10 years ago, maybe more, we had someone from the state come out and talk to us about it, from the State Board of EMS. And I remember that person saying, being a paramedic doesn't necessarily qualify you to be a director.
Well, no, I understand that. I mean...
I mean, you don't even have to be anything to be a director.
Right. The person doing this could technically be, I mean, a glorified secretary for doing all the paperwork, but if we're gonna expect them to coordinate the training...
And also be a working member of...
On the ambulance, I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Terry. I agree. However, especially since we're so small, we don't want just an office person. We want someone who is physically involved.
Yes.
We have typically tried, over the past number of years, to have a paramedic as the director.
Can we add the A in there? What's the A stand for? That's your next level of certification.
Um, I think it's like, if EMT-A's like advanced, I think is what it...
I would prefer that, but that's up to you to agree. I just think that...
I think, my, my only problem with that is some of these people have been EMTs for years, and they may have just gotten their A. So, if you're gonna require them to be an A for three years, you may disqualify some
No, it just says three years of emergency medical technician experience. And then the next level of education is A. So, let's say you've been an EMT for 10 years, and you want this supervisory position, you go and get your accreditation to the next level, and then you're qualified. Does that make sense?
Yeah, as long as...
I feel like if someone internally wanted that job, they could go and get the next level.
You're down on...
They need to have at least three years of experience and hold the certification of at least an EMT-A.
But you want the education down, you want it under education.
Under education.
Yeah.
Yes, not under the, I'm sorry, not under the first one, under the second one of education.
Okay.
Hold certification. If you just change...
I'm with you. Employee must have current Kansas Emergency Medical Technician Advanced? Is that what that is?
Yes. I, yeah. Yes, I'm with you. We can make three years up top and change that down below.
My next point would be down under supervision. And I'm just gonna say this, not just for this position, but all, all of the ones that we received, which are all the branches that are directly underneath the commissioners.
Yes.
Um, my question there, I just wrote in accountability, question mark. There's nothing under this supervision section that has any demands on the employee to provide any statistical or analytical information. And I think that would be helpful for this board. If we, you know, Terry, I understand, you know, you volunteer, you're there, you see what's going on. I'm not. I don't believe Mr. Wallace is. So, if, if the person with this position comes in and reports, you know, we've gone on X amount of runs this month, we've done this, this, and this training up until this point in the year, I feel like right now, this whole year, the commission has just been seeing people come in as topics come up, and they want to defend themselves, so they come to the board. If they would be proactive in bringing information to the board, then our job would be easier as far as looking at how the money is spent. So, under supervision, it just says, this position is subject to supervision by the Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners. Employee provides supervision over subordinate personnel. But my question is, where's the accountability? What is that, that relationship of supervision with the county commission over the director? Where is the requirement as far as what information they're supposed to provide? I think it would be nice to see any department head once a month, if that's possible. I understand it's not always, but...
I don't think that's bad. I think that you guys would need to express to your department heads that you want to see them at least once per month, and I would imagine they would come and see you once per month with an update. If you...
I don't think that has any issue with that.
I, somewhere in there, it says, um, something about meetings, we can add as a marginal function, you know, updates the board on a monthly basis?
Where are you at?
On the front page. We could add a marginal function or, or reward one of these to include, because the one...
Attends and works with various committees and meetings as needed?
Well, we could add something that says, um, updates the board or meets monthly or something. You have to say what, I, I don't think that's bad. And we could put that in all the department heads.
As a, as a function.
As a function. Uh-huh.
I think it ought to be under a function. I don't think it needs to be under this other, whatever this other, these definitions.
But, and then that would be something that I would say should be on all of them, added to all the department.
Yes, yes, that's where I was going with that. I would have tried to just single this one out.
No, no. I didn't think that you were, yeah. Okay. So, I can try to combine some of the functions. I can add those and update it and get those back to you.
Good.
Next one?
Oh, oh, I have one more. Under physical requirements, it says manual labor, including heavy lifting and carrying, is required to perform this position. I know just from personal experience that a lot of times when you get a job description, even when you apply for the job, it gives you something physical that you have to do. You know, lift 50 pounds, or, which in this, in this position, it would be much more than that, because you're potentially lifting people. So, I was wondering, when it says physical requirements, manual labor, including heavy lifting and carrying, like what? I mean, I feel like it's not very specific. Heavy to one person may not be heavy to another, and I would think that some sort of, I mean, sometimes you even have to take like a fitness test for these types of positions.
These job descriptions were created by an attorney, so I'm assuming that there's a reason why.
And a, a lot of it is, what attorney?
Um, the legal municipal, well, these were either done by Chakrani and Bacon or the legal municipalities attorney, who did.
Who did that.
Um, so, they reviewed all of our job descriptions and made changes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gonna be hard to come up with a number on lifting, because...
Well, it doesn't have to be changed now.
I can tell you, there's, there's times you're lifting way more than your shift, probably.
I guess the practical question is, by what standards are we going to measure the physical requirements of this job?
Well, I don't think we can disqualify somebody because they can't lift 200 pounds,
I mean, I guess if we're requiring them to, to be on the ambulance crew and attend incidents, you know, we wouldn't want someone with, you know, some sort of severe disability where they couldn't perform a physical function.
Right. And your, and I can tell you, when we interviewed, that's one of the things that we ask an applicant, can you perform?
What?
Can you perform the duties of the position with or without special accommodation? There's a verbiage that we use when we ask them if they can perform the functions of the position. What would you like to see added?
I'm just throwing it out there for suggestion. I don't, I didn't, I just wrote, I literally wrote, like what? Is my question, like what? It's not something...
That's, that's kind of me. I'm like, like what? What I could do is see...
I don't see how we can put a number with it.
Well, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm trying to think. What if, I can see what some of the other counties have in theirs, and see if they have something that would be a better verbiage?
That'd be great.
I'm gonna say it's like ads I've seen online that they've sent, like, in excess of 50 pounds or in excess of 25 pounds, or... We'll see what we can find that others are using that might, might make that sound better.
Yeah, I think, you know, I could say in excess of a number.
Okay, any more questions on ambulance? Okay, we'll do a praiser.
Do we pay for the appraiser's office to belong to the Kansas Association of Counties? Do you happen to know that off the top of your head, Don?
I believe that we do, but, you know. Oh, to the Kansas Association of Counties? No.
No.
They, each office pays their own membership dues, and then those memberships, like, the Appraisers Association will pay for dues to the KAC directly.
But she, but our appraiser's office... But she, but our appraisers' office does pay to the appraisers-
Association.
Association, okay.
I'll double check that, though, I'm confident.
All right.
I was at the clerk or anybody else, all treasurers, they all have their own-
Well, that's what I wanted to know, because at the meeting this past week, they, for twelve years, I think, the Register of Deeds had not belonged as a, as an association to that group, total, in a, in a total sense. So, I was wondering if-
They have been previously, and then Ring and Lander versus Lincoln County came into, to play. A lot of associations dropped the membership to KAC, because KAC was supporting both the commissioners and not supporting both the other, um, yes. So, then they formed their own group, and the Cliffs Association Sheriff's Office, I believe, treasurers and register of deeds were, were a group of their own, and then they disbanded. And I think some of them are going back to KAC.
Well, that's, the Register of Deeds just rejoined this week.
Most of this is a technical, I don't know what's going-
I know.
I mean, that's, that's what she has to do, I mean, that's-
Yes, and I, and I'll be honest, this one, the Department one, I wish there was a way to combine them and make it a little less wordy, but some of the things that they do are so, I'm not sure how. And perhaps that's something that I could ask Rhonda to assist with, kind of, condensing some more. Um, I know that she looked at it, and the only thing that she saw to change was, um, change, she had me change, 'cause I brought her notes, um, did it Kim, or whatever it was called before, um, to Orion? And then she had me change, under education, for it to read, uh, the Certified Real Property Appraisers License, or, uh, Registered Mass Appraiser, and be on the state's eligibility list. Otherwise, they can't be a county appraiser. It used to say, "Pass the state property evaluation certification exam." And she had me take that out, 'cause she said, "That's not correct anymore."
The state's changing requirements?
I'm guessing, yes. From what she said, yeah, now you have to be a Registered Mass Appraiser, or hold your state license. And to be on the eligibility list.
For this particular position, do you think that it might be a little more appropriate to just suggest a higher level degree? Not that one is required, but, um, I mean, we're basically saying, a high school diploma or GED is required. And then after that, you just take your, you know, Appraiser's License class and certification, so-
I think it's pretty extensive in order to receive the Appraiser's License.
Assuming that's all the prerequisites are, to take the course to-
It sounded to me like there was, it was quite involved to get that, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
More like a technical, technical, a technical training.
Oh, I'm, I mean, I'm sure, if you have a hundred and twenty hours every, every four years, then you have to have, you know, a decent amount of hours to begin with to get that. I guess I'm just saying, if, if we're employing this person and putting them as a manager, so to speak, over personnel, that's, you know, not a lot of prerequisite there.
Anything else on appraiser? That sticks out?
Well, it was interesting. I had talked to several appraisers this week, who all made the comment that the commissioners have no idea what they do. And that may be true on some level, um, I wouldn't know, you know, what all the details of that job were at all.
I think we have a general idea, we have a general idea.
Well, you know how it fits into the whole system, but as far as knowing their job, I, you know, I don't, I don't think we do. But, again, under supervision, the accountability section, I'm just reiterating what I said previously, but, you know, the only time that I've seen the appraiser this year is when she requested for us to re-sign her contract of employment.
Monthly updates to the board, we'll put that on their lunchbox head, on every one of them.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, typically, we have a question, she'd come in and, uh-
Are we on E, maybe C, D, D?
I'm assuming that D, you're on Public Works, Director of Public Works? Okay, just making sure we're all on the same one. Are we on the next one? Yes, do it to Public Works.
This is another one, I would say, about the education requirements are questionable, because if we're only requiring a GED for this position, I mean, that's-
Post-secondary education, some college, or vocational technical education is preferred.
Preferred?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a requirement at all. I mean, some counties, Director of Public Works, are engineers, like, actual engineers. Which-
We haven't employed an engineer since John Kishat, who was in the Department of Public Works. John Kishat, will he be an engineer?
Well, I know, a lot of the smaller counties can't afford an engineer on their staff. However, the fact that that title, Director of Public Works, can be synonymous with an engineer as an employee, kind of indicates the level of competency that one should have in that particular position. We can take out-
An engineer is not necessarily a good supervisor, though. I mean, he's an engineer, but that doesn't mean he can have any knowledge of running equipment, or driving trucks, or-
We could say, as they are preferred, it's required, that they have some post-secondary education?
I think we're limiting ourselves when we start doing that. We're gonna limit our pool of resources.
Isn't that the intention?
I would hope not.
I don't think, college doesn't make someone, it might give them some knowledge, but it doesn't make them a supervisor, or be able to run equipment, or, I think that, you know, most of your guys out there that's been working construction all these years didn't go to college. Did you go to college, Norman?
I'm not gonna answer that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that, I mean, as far as what I see, that there is a road and bridge supervisor who would be more hands-on with equipment. What we're looking at here, um, secures construction projects and assigns work schedules, you know, inspects roads, bridges, culvert, sign, those kinds of things. I mean, we're, we're basically paying twice to do all of that. And prepares accurate cost estimates, that's all, that's not necessarily hands-on, physical labor, you know? Works with consulting engineer, K. Dot personnel. I mean, this doesn't, this obviously can be looked at, we, we made a resolution to look at them every year, so I'm not saying that any of this has to be changed immediately, I'm just throwing things out there. If, if you're saying, Mr. Chairman, that you don't think we should limit our pool as far as who we're putting in superviory, supervisory positions, I'm going to disagree with that statement. I think that you should always limit your pool of who you're putting in those important positions. It's not just open to someone's friend or relative.
I don't think we-
Or is it?
We wouldn't disqualify someone with a college education, but I don't think we need to require them to have one, not for that position.
This, I'm not sure what, I thought this position was created here not too long ago, Director of Public Works.
Well, the title was changed. We've always had two people there.
And so, what I'm saying is, if you're going to use-
Supervisor, and I remember what we called the other one. We just, when we combined Noxious Weed and Landfill into the position, we changed the title.
And years, I think, years ago, before we had been combined then, too, and then it kind of got separated out. I don't know what the proper verbiage is, like, I, I, I understand what you're saying. You have a person who applies to a job, and they have twenty-some years of experience and knowledge, and, and the skill and the ability to do the job, but they didn't go to college. You don't wanna disqualify that person. But you also don't want to make the position seem so limited on the requirements, or no requirements, that any person thinks that they're qualified to do the job. And you wanna find the best person to do that job. So, I don't know what the right- I don't know if required, I mean, 'cause we continue to require, but I don't know if that's-
Well, what I'm seeing is, you know, you, you created this title, Director of Public Works, and you, from within, put someone into that position. So, you're basing whatever this job requirement is on how that was formulated to begin with. The supervisor position for road and bridge, you're saying, is a more long-term position that you've had, and you basically had, what, a road supervisor, road and bridge supervisor who had an assistant? Is kind of what it was before. Now, you're putting someone above that road and bridge supervisor, which in my opinion, should be held to a higher standard as far as capability and/or, I understand what you're saying about experience, I would agree with that a hundred percent. However, the, the position, the functions are similar for these two, um, situations, and when you look at other counties who are bigger and can afford an actual engineer in this position, that's above the supervisor position, that indicates the, the separation there as far as what you're looking for when you determine those, those credentials.
We're not hiring an engineer. You go like Sling County, they have an engineer, but he doesn't run the highway department.
Am I understanding that for the road and bridge depart, for the highway department, besides pay rate, everyone is on a lateral line? And then you have the road and bridge supervisor, and then Director of Public Works? Is that a correct assumption?
Well, the House has got a bridge supervisor, Bridge Crew Foreman.
Bridge Crew Foreman.
They've also, you know, you have your Noxious Weed Director.
He takes care of the-
Your land, well, transfer station.
But they have individual jobs.
Got a head, head greater man, we, we don't do that anymore?
Give him the night years.
What? I thought we gave the-
You have a, well, I guess, I am not sure how you-
You're not head ever, but he's, he's the trainer, or the-
He's the, he's the person that we designate to help in training, and who is that training?
John Woolley.
And I think we did have a kind of designated, I think there's one guy that's kind of designated to get the truck drivers, truck drivers going a little bit. I think so.
It could be.
But I don't think we, you know, I think there is, I think they kind of have an order to some of them.
So, do you want me to leave it preferred? Do you want me to change it so that it says, "Post-secondary education, some college, or vocational is required," or you want preferred?
I would prefer it.
Prefer, prefer.
Okay.
I prefer preferred.
And although they come more often, I'll make sure that I do add monthly updates to the board under the function.
Yeah, that's been quite helpful, that they already come on a regular basis.
But I'll make sure that it's in the future.
Yeah, yep.
And like their resistance with, I'll just add to it, on at least a monthly basis.
While we're there, Deborah, we'll skip the alphabetical order and go to road. We'll move R in the alphabet of-
You move, you move R?
We're gonna move R up ahead of H.
This is just grammatical, but I picked it up. The physical requirements under road and bridge supervisor, at the bottom there, there's no noun in that sentence at the end. "Some adverse conditions this employee may encounter include performing manual labor, including..." You may wanna reword all that with the include and the include over top of that. But, "lifting and carrying heavy objects, excessive walking, and operating loud or noisy."
equipment.
Oh! Does Hannah have access to the job descriptions for the subordinate personnel in this department? For under, for any of the other highway department employees, does she, in that, in your office, can she grab me one of the, um, like, the job descriptions for the, for the under employees? Just to look at that for a second?
Like, equipment operator?
Yeah, yeah.
Poss, well, she'd have to, yeah, probably. Do you-
Would you grab one?
Or I'd say, I can just go get one.
If you don't mind, well, we're still looking at this one, just because, just because there are so many employees in this department.
Anyone.
Are, are they all separate? Do you have them separated?
What do you mean?
Do you have them separated by position, like truck driver, greater, can you grab a greater one, please?
A greater one.
I'm seeing a lot of overlap between the Director of Public Works and the supervisor position as far as under, for example, marginal functions. So, under supervisor, it says, "Makes necessary one calls for special projects." And then under public works, it says, "Ensures that one calls are made on all county projects." I'm not sure if, I mean, I understand that's detailing all of it, but that just brings me back to the concept of accountability.
Well, they both make calls. They don't limit it to just one, they can make one call.
So, okay, "Prepares long-term goals and planning for the department," under Director of Public Works. And then, "Assists with preparation of long-term goals and planning for the department," under road and bridge supervisor. And if you remember, about a month ago or so, I had asked for the list of projects that are either being worked on, or that are scheduled for some point in the near future, and it was refused. So, I'm wondering why? If that's part of the essential, well, marginal, which, I think we should take that word out, their marginal functions is inappropriate, but if that's part of the function of the position for both of these people, why was it not provided?
I think there was probably a little bit of a misunderstanding. I think they can provide you with a list of projects that they are currently working on and preparing to work on. I don't think that what they didn't want to do was- I don't think that what they didn't want to do was an overall list of every project in the county that they're looking at, because some of them, I'll give you, for instance, there are bridges out there that are never going to be replaced because of financial reasons, but that doesn't mean that they're not on the list of possibilities in case there's some miraculous change in the way the state hands out money.
But why would that not be part of the discussion, just knowing those things, not-
If, if someone thinks that the bridge by their house is never going to get replaced, is on the list of things to do, then they're going to be wondering when it's going to happen.
But it's our job to relate the justification for that decision. That's our job as a board. You know, if the highway department tells us, well, look, these three bridges are on the no, no can-do list, it's our job to say why and to give that justification. You know, that's how we internally protect our own employees, is we take the brunt of that, not-
I think we have. When we had that list of bridges we closed, we gave the reason why they were being closed. But that doesn't mean that if five years from now, all of a sudden, the funding things change and they go back to giving us the money that we're supposed to get instead of keeping it at the state level, that those projects could possibly get done. You know, they did away with the five-year bridge plan, they went to this cost share thing, that they were taking, I believe, 15% of the money, and now they're taking 25% of the money. And it's pass-through money from the federal government, that's what it is.
Yeah, they tried to give an explanation of that at the seminar, and it was poorly done. It was poorly done, and I was a little perturbed.
They don't have a good reason for it, that's why.
Well, they made it one of the last sessions of the seminar, because it's one of the most important issues. I mean, road, you know, infrastructure is what every county is struggling with, bigger, like, smaller, grandiose, and they gave about an hour presentation in the last day, very minimal answer, question, answer session, and it was frustrating, because I felt like that should have been one of the main focus areas.
State's been taking money away from DOT, I think at a half a million dollars a day or something like that over the past few years, and they need the money that's supposed to come to us to make up the differences so they can operate, because that's basically what it amounts to.
Out of curiosity, Deborah, did the department heads this year go over any of these job descriptions?
Yes.
For the, okay. And you said every position has a CDL requirement, is that right?
In the highway department, except the office position.
Right, okay.
Didn't really feel that was necessary, but yes. That way-
The reason for that is that they're, you know, they may be in a position where they have to get the trucks.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
Even though they're not a truck driver, they may be in a position where they have to drive them.
And are we, have, I didn't notice maybe with any of the hirees this year, but are we providing that if they apply? Is that, has that ever-
If, if they don't have and they're willing to obtain one, we will assist them, either with the class and bollards or whatever, you know.
Do we pay that full, full amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, I just, I don't remember if we did, did we do that this year at all?
We have had some that couldn't do it.
Didn't pass.
The requirements to get a CDL is a little bit more difficult than it used to be. I don't have one, so-
So are we, do we hire contingent upon their ability to finish that requirement? Is that how we've done that?
They know, yes, we will, we state to them that if they don't have one, they're required to get.
And if they can't?
And if they can't, they know they don't have a job.
That's fine, I mean, that's part of the-
The one thing that I'll, that, like, the VOTAC and bollard is very, very good about is they try to encourage all incoming students to obtain one, so that down the road, it's easier for them, because it gets harder and harder to go back and get one, because it is extensive and it should be. It should be difficult. It, they should have to pass, they should have to, you know, have a great knowledge of what they're operating and what they're doing. We had considered at one point, you know, were there positions that maybe we did need to require to have one? We kind of had that conversation back and forth, but then as they said, what if you need somebody to do something else? You just want the best people operating your equipment.
No, and it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a great asset to that person regardless of how long they're employed here. I mean, it's an asset for them to obtain that.
Yes. Yes, it is on everyone's.
The only position that's required to have it prior to employment is the truck driver.
Yes, thank you.
Because they can't drive the truck.
We won't, yeah, that makes sense.
They could be hired into another position.
Yes.
And then get acquired with CDL to come to the ground.
So one thing I'm seeing, or not seeing, I should say, which position, the Director of Public Works or the road and bridge supervisor, is going to have that responsibility of equipment maintenance?
Well, I think essentially they both do.
I think it's a lot to ask the supervisor to be on every project physically and to make sure that the maintenance is, I mean, I understand they don't do the maintenance themselves, but as far as a supervisory position to say, you know, hey, we've noticed that this particular machine, you know, the loader at the landfill hasn't had its oil changed, you know, or someone says that, who's going to basically ensure that some kind of action is taken? I mean, I see under essential functions for Director of Public Works, responsible for interviewing, hiring, evaluating, rewarding, disciplining, and terminating department personnel. I would say that would be a more appropriate solution than, than the bridge, road and bridge supervisor, because this is a more integrated position as far as being on the work site. I remember asking Michael O'Hare as Director of Public Works, the percentage of time he spends in the field versus in the office, and he said it's about 90/10. So he's 90% doing phone calls, paperwork, gathering information, and 10% in the field. So I would say, I mean, are, at this current time, does the mechanic schedule all of the contracted maintenance on the, on the equipment, where we have contracts to do those thousand hours?
I believe they provide the hours. You know, some of the equipment, like a dozer, they know how many hours, and the new cat blades, they know how many hours are on it.
I think that there's a program that they use tracks a lot of that. I would have to ask them specifically how that function works, because I'll be honest, I don't know, because I'm not there every day. I'm not there any day.
I would almost assume that it's a combination of both, that, like, the normal maintenance stuff that the mechanics are scheduling, but if there's a major breakdown, I think supervisors are contacting the company to determine what's wrong with it and whether or not they're going to fix it.
The newer caterpillar blades and the dozer bowies know how many hours it's on.
It's computerized, yeah, great. I know, like, the blade guys-
They do that, they like it that way, so they can schedule the maintenance. They can follow it and see, well, you know, in two weeks, that thing's going to need serviced or whatever.
I believe that, like, the blade guys keep track of their hours on their equipment, and they know when it's up and when it's time to get it scheduled in. How all of that functions on a day-to-day basis, I'd have to ask. And that's something that I can, I can ask, I can call down there, I can ask which, where they feel like some of that should be, and where, how is that functioning, and whose responsibility is that, and which description should that be on? Because I would have to ask.
There's a more detailed physical requirements section that you have under this greater operator, I don't know if she gave you one of those as well, but just seeing that, just it talks about examples include but not limited to climbing a ladder, lifting and moving objects weighing up to 50 pounds. That's a little more detailed than what we had under the ambulance director.
Yes. And maybe this is something that we can just copy over to that one?
I like it, should probably say weigh in possibly excess of 50 pounds.
Okay, yeah, over and above.
Now I gotta flip back to that one.
I have one more question I have for both, both positions, supervisor and Director of Public Works, under the bottom bullet, marginal functions, performs other duties as deemed necessary or as assigned?
Yes.
And then, and then the other road and bridge supervisor has meets with Board of County Commissioners. That's in both, it's up a few bullets on the other one as well. That may be comparable, you know, because who else would be assigning another duty?
We put a, performs other duties as deemed on pretty much, they should be on every single one. That's that catch-all, or whatever else we ask you and need you to do as part of the job. Okay, but on road supervisor, assist, locate, attend trainings and sessions follows of assists. And it does say, and do you want, is it continue to say meets with the Commissioners on the road and bridge supervisor?
Yeah, he seems to have more personal knowledge of being at the locations.
Other than that, on road supervisor, we're okay?
Mm-hmm.
And I can call down and ask about the equipment maintenance and find out how that function works and where that should be.
I think these look pretty good. Okay, I mean, just those few small changes, but I think that it, there's a lot in there that's good.
Emergency management, is that one next?
Yeah, that's the next.
I didn't print that off either.
Oh, I emailed it to you.
Yeah, I emailed it to. My computers.
I'm sorry.
I'll run down, but essential functions, communicates and works with governmental entities and individuals to coordinate emergency management programs, prepares monthly, quarterly, and yearly reports for the state and federal government, advises the Commissioners and the State Division of Emergency Management regarding disaster declarations, coordinates local disaster programs with federal and state programs, establishes and maintains network of expert advisors and damage assessors, prepares reports, updates, and guides as directed by KDEM for FEMA, plans, designs, executes, maintains, and updates emergency operations plans, maintains and works with LEPC, plans, directs, and trains or schedules training for personnel and proper disaster and emergency procedures, conducts information meetings with local officials, general public, and county staff about emergency management, coordinates public awareness programs, marginal functions prepares departmental budget, maintains personnel records for department volunteers, operates and maintains emergency equipment, makes recommendations for new equipment and modification of old equipment, works in conjunction with other public safety departments and interested parties to achieve coordination of plans to be carried out in an emergency, responds to public inquiries, attends workshops and meetings, maintains department inventory, assists county emergency entities with grant applications, performs other duties as deemed necessary or as assigned. Does assist county emergency entities with grant applications include EMS?
Uh, well, he would, he would.
I think that, I'll, I believe in the past, the majority of the help that he has provided a lot to, like, the fire districts and whatnot, but pretty much any department that came, they needed some help, and he had the data to provide and to help, he will assist. I'm not sure how helpful he'd be with road and bridge, but especially departments within emergency.
Well, yeah, equipments and things that come out that are available through emergency management.
A lot of, like, the fire grants ask about incidents, number of incidents, types of incidents, so where he keeps track of a lot of that stuff, he's able to provide them some data to help with grants.
Experience, one to three years of similar or related experience is required. Employees is expected to have acquired the necessary information and skills to perform the job reasonably well within six months of employment. High school diploma or GED is required. This employee must have or obtain a Kansas emergency manager certificate within two year, I mean, of employment. A valid Kansas driver's license is required. Firefighting hazardous materials and rescue background is necessary. I don't know how you would measure that if you were only asking for one to three years of experience and a GED. Knowledge of radio communication equipment and frequencies, radio warning systems and their maintenance operation is required. This employee should have knowledge of computer systems and their application to emergency management. This employee should have the ability to organize and coordinate activities of other persons, including being able to give and receive detailed verbal instructions in emergencies. The ability to understand and work with state and federal regulations pertaining to emergency preparedness, hazardous materials, radiological protection is required. This employee should also possess excellent written and verbal communication skills and be able to handle volunteer situations, and be able to establish priorities for projects and work assignments. This employee must be able to work productively without direct supervision. Problem solving is a significant factor in this position as it pertains to emergency management. Problems this employee may encounter include establishing priorities for projects and equipment malfunction. Decision-making is involved in this position. This employee must be able to exercise good judgment in evaluating emergency situations to make appropriate decisions based on circumstances and information. This employee acts under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners. This employee exercises supervisory responsibilities over volunteer responders in emergency situations. My note there just says accountability again for reports, which he does report to us, but, yeah, I like to see that. This employee is responsible for county equipment and resources. This employee prepares the departmental budget. This employee is responsible for applying for departmental grants. Continuous contact, excuse me, with general public coworkers and supervisor, supervisory personnel is expected. Some adverse working conditions exist within this position. Exposure to large and small machinery and equipment, excessive noise, hazardous chemicals, and all types of weather conditions are expected. Although this is primarily a management position, some manual labor, including lifting and carrying heavy objects, and the ability to operate department equipment is required, employees must be at their job performing essential duties on a regular and continuing basis with no excessive absence.
Did there any mention that Deborah, the fire department, his relationship to the fire departments, I don't know whether that ought to be specifically, that's become kind of important now to keep up-
Okay, they do like a quarterly fire chief meeting, should that be something that-
Yeah, I know they do, and I didn't know whether, I didn't know whether that was in-
Under conducts information meetings with local officials, general public, and county staff about emergency management, it could just say in other emergency departments or something like that?
Because that's become extremely important with our volunteer fire departments, emergency management, working with them.
Yes.
Keeping them updated.
Sounds good, I can add that, and I will add monthly updates to the board.
So what we got left, Deborah, health?
Oh, we got the health nurse.
The health nurse.
That's all I have, right? Do you have any others?
The only other ones would be, is it-
Is that the last one?
Yeah.
Department head-wise, yes. The other ones, like the custodian and the recycling employee falls under you guys technically. Do you want copies of those? And I'm not sure where, like, the transportation bus, because he answers to the bus board, but he is a county employee.
Did they have a job description?
Sort of, so I kind of took what they had, but I'd like to change it to the format that we have, but I can give you what I kind of have roughly, and it would just be rough.
I think, I think you need to go through it with them first.
Yeah, I think, why don't you develop, could you develop one with them?
With them, and then we'll look at it, you know, I would, I would just rather-
Yes, but do you want the custodian one and the recycling center? Because technically those fall under you guys, and then you can take those home, you can take a look, and we can kind of go from there. And I think the other one for today is the health nurse.
Yep, one more for today. Health nurse, we'll be done. Yep, one more for today. Health nurse, we'll be done. Under the health nurse, Deborah, the one thing that I guess we had at this fall is that I wonder if somewhere that ought to be her function to keep us aware of the HIPAA requirements and possibly violations that we would see, because when they told me about those fines out there in Arizona, it makes me a little nervous. I don't think five million is going to go very far.
We do, we do do an annual meeting like that, correct? So could that be what she's supposed to present?
But I just, I just think she needs to keep us up, but you never know when something's going to come down the pipe from human, whatever they call that, health thing up there in Washington DC. But I think, I think that's very important, that that maybe be part of her function.
Come up with a, where that would be appropriate and how to word that.
That's the one thing I kind of gleaned out.
Yours is lengthy.
Most of it is, is by law that she has.
And I will put, update the board monthly, like the others.
Well, see, I, my question is, you know, we're requiring this position, the health nurse administrator, to be an RN.
They have to be.
Right.
Stay.
So, okay, I understand that.
Yes.
But, you know, if, if we're saying that this person who has, what, four employees underneath them? Five total or four? Four plus themselves or five under?
Either. Or five, other way.
Okay, and, and see, my discrepancy here is not with what her requirements are, but if you go back to the Director of Public Works, who's overseeing twenty some employees, I feel like that is, that's a very disparaging, you know, situation there between the two. If, if we're requiring.
But to perform her duty, she has to be an RN.
I understand that.
It, it is, it's difficult, and, and I, LaDonna and I have had conversations about this before too, that in order for her to do her job, she must have her RN, she must have a college education, she must be, but there are other, there are other departments that you can be a department and not have a.
Right, and my only point is that we're putting someone over four to five people in, in their situation, and then we're, and then we're putting someone else over twenty-eight potentially people, if you include Notchusweed and the landfill, and we have very little additional requirements there, so it's just something to consider. You know, if, if you say we're limiting our pool, you know, then are we supposed to be afraid that we'll never have an RN again in the county that could possibly take on this position? I mean, if we don't set some kind of standard, standard guidelines for how we're going to expect someone to supervise dozens, literally, of employees, you know, I think that it's just something that we really need to be looking at in the future. I'm not gonna say that it has to be changed now. I think it's a great thing that we're going to be looking at these yearly. But given that dynamic, it should really hit home as far as what the expectations are. We're holding one person to this high standard because the state says so. You know, there, there are many justifications for, let me say it this way.
I, I, I understand what you're saying greatly. In order to be the administrator at the health department, she has to be a nurse. I can't go do that job. In order to be, for the most part, based on our job description, to be the director at the ambulance service, I'm going to have to go get an EMT certification and get that medical experience and that background in order to do that job, but not every department functions the same way, and it is. It's difficult. It's hard to know what's right.
What we're seeing in Lincoln County is a position that was created called Director of Public Works, based on an internal formulation that you were, you know, putting someone into a position because of their quote unquote experience. However, you compare that to other department heads, you compare that to other counties. It's a very serious position with some, some requirements, and then as a board, we're not even contracting an engineer on a regular basis for a few thousand dollars a month, literally less than a thousand dollars according to the contract, if we used them one day a week, so that we can ensure that type of management in our, in our largest department with the most employees and the highest expenses. That's my concern there, but that has nothing to do with looking at this individual job description. I think it's pretty good, except there's one thing I would like to add, and as you have already probably noted about the supervision, the accountability under supervision. So I really like the second line under essential functions. It says, responsible for keeping accurate record of all transactions of the agency, including clients served, dollars spent, activities completed, and other pertinent, pertinent, excuse me, statistics. So that, to me, is what we should be looking for as a board from every department.
There are some inconsistencies with some of them, because like I noticed that I think there's one that says sets long-term and short-term goals wise, and then on every department heads. There are some things like that. There's some verbiage that's a little different from one to the other that I'd like to make more consistent so that, that those phrases are the same. One says that they should meet with the public in a professional and courteous manner. The other just say meet with the public. Some of those things should be more consistent, and maybe something like that should be on all of them about data for their department.
Can I be honest? The reason why they probably have that in there is because they're required to provide it to the state.
And for their grants.
Well, and that's a good thing. I mean, that's, that's helpful for a panel of three people who meets once a week to say, oh, okay, last month we had forty people, but, you know, in February there were twenty. We can see trends of usage of our services. We can see long-term trends, seasonal things. You know, those are all important for us to be able to make decisions, especially when you have a declining population and a growing tax base. You know, not base, but a growing tax dollar.
That's really lengthy, but maybe there's, can word it a little bit, a little bit better, but yeah, probably something on all of them that talks about some statistical data or, you know.
It's good.
And each department would be different what they're keeping for data, you know. And I know that Dan keeps records as to how much, how often, and where all these phrase, so he's keeping data. And I know the landfill has to track everyone that comes in, what they dump, when they dump, how, so there's a lot of them that are doing that.
Prime example would be like the bus board. You know, I, I had been to two bus board meetings just for a brief minute because our meetings overlap. However, you know, here towards the end of the year, we had a board representative come to us and say they were thinking about cutting hours because of the usage. Well, we had never received a usage report all year long, so we were unaware unless we took it upon ourselves individually to inquire with the bus board and request information. You know, we were unaware of that decline in usage. So are, are we supposed to make decisions just based on the recommendation of one board member coming to us at the end of the year and saying, oh, hey, you know, we're going to cut hours, or we're thinking about cutting hours because of et cetera, et cetera. If we had even quarterly updates on something like that, it would, we would have previously had knowledge, oh, well, yes, numbers have been declining for the last three years, so we can see why you're looking at that option. And then all of a sudden, when something turns around, we have legitimate questions as to why. Oh, okay, well, how are you going to increase this usage or better use of that dollar that we're spending to support that particular program?
I can definitely put something like that in the other ones. Where the bus is concerned though, a good question for that would be, do you want me to include in that? And who would come? Who do you want? Do you want the bus board to come quarterly? Do you want their employee to come quarterly? What, what is it? Because that kind of dynamic is a little different because he answers to that board?
Well, it can even be mailed or presented, just paperwork.
Okay.
You know.
Any member of the board or whatever.
Okay, so in his, like, in the, in the transportation bus one, provide some type of at least quarterly update.
A representative.
Or, okay. And I've been going to their meetings, so I can share that with them as well, whether it be a member or jury or just something you're writing. Okay, anything else for the health nurse?
Am I correct that I've been told, and I'm understanding, that LaDonna, as the health nurse administrator, she's pretty much the only department head who is sending in her bills and telling the, basically accounts payable from which fund to deduct certain bills? I mean, is that?
No.
No, I don't think that that's probably, no. I, I don't really count payable, Hannah does, but I think that.
Are you saying who codes accounts payable? Who codes what line item that comes out of? Highway Department codes, Health Department codes, District Court codes. Some of the other departments will write on there which line item they want it to come out of.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Now, if that needs to be changed, for whatever reason, there, who's, who's making that decision?
Change.
The code.
What do you mean?
If someone, if I sent in a bill and I coded it to come out of contractual line item fund in my account, in my budget, but I was mistaken and it wasn't paying for a contract, it was a one-time purchase, that it was supposed to come out of commodities, et cetera, who calls that change?
The department head would let us know, and depending on if we've updated the end of the month already, then we can do a journal entry, and I start the journal entry. The, we haven't updated the end of the month, we can go in and manually change it in the accounts payable system before it's updated.
Well, thank you, Deborah.
Okay, I'll give you then the custodian.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm not, you can just take it with you.
All right.
Recycling, and then I will do something with the transportation bus. Okay.
Thank you, Deborah.
Yep.
Okay, Alexis, do you have something for us today?
Um, I would ask for a point of personal privilege for five minutes if we may, and then.
You want to recess, in other words?
Please.
I don't know. Can we play kickball? Yes, that's fine. We'll recess.
Thank you.
Till five till.
Dawn, did you get numbers for me?
Okay, it's five till. We'll start in again.
Okay, the first thing I think we should discuss is the gravel price. I really think we need to.
The what?
The gravel price.
Oh.
I know that the highway department wasn't here today, but we still didn't come up with what we have as consensus from the board to be able to discuss that with the highway department and contrast that with their suggestion, whatever that may be. We basically learned that what we're paying is fifty percent of what some other counties are paying for their contracts.
I believe that's correct.
So then the question becomes, if we are spending twice as much money a year on purchased material from APAC, then we are spending money pulling it out of our own ground. You know, how, how much more material can we get for that same dollar, even at the higher rate of pay for gravel, compared to what we were figuring by the yard purchasing, or excuse me, by the tonnage purchasing from APAC?
Well, most, most of what I purchased from APAC, there's years we purchased very little, and there's years we purchased more. It depends on the weather conditions and the gravel that we're putting down. Some of it's better than others.
But what I'm saying, for the last two years consecutively, we spent twice as much money purchasing from APAC as we have spent contracting and accumulating gravel from our own land. So for twice the, twice the payout, we are potentially getting that much more material by cubic yard than we are by tonnage and at purchase price from APAC. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, I guess I see what you're saying. I'm not sure what the point is that you're trying to make.
I'm trying to get us to discuss a dollar amount that will be viable from here forward with the contracts that we have, expecting to, you know, ascertain a certain amount of gravel and potentially even forego some of the purchasing that we've done, because we haven't budgeted for the amount of purchasing that we've done in the past two years. And I'm not, I'm still not sure where that's come from, what line items we pulled the extra funds from. Basically what I'm saying is for the past two years, we've overspent our gravel budget, and I don't know where that money is coming from out of the highway department, but it's coming. And we've spent twice as much money on purchasing as we have excavating, so to speak. Are we going to direct the highway department to do more excavation and get us our dollars worth if we're going to pay twice the amount this year if we go to two dollars a cubic yard?
But they're using the rock in areas where the gravel isn't, isn't, uh, it's needing something added to it to make it set up.
Right, but he just said that we have a third of it left from whatever we've accumulated this year. So we're, we're going into this, this 2018 with some stockpile on purchased material.
And, you know, depending on the weather conditions, we may not purchase any rock. We try not to purchase rock because it's much more expensive than the gravel is.
So are we willing to look at paying double in 2018 at two dollars a cubic yard?
Well, I think, I think we're gonna have to increase it substantially at least to get us in line with what everybody else is willing to pay.
Well.
And, you know, for the year, we're just gonna have to hopefully have close to enough rock stockpiled to carry us through whatever we have to put down. Your weather conditions dictate a lot of that.
So what are we going to suggest as a price? And are we going to contract that as of the beginning of 2018?
I would say. I guess I, I mean, in my, in my thinking, I thought we would go to two, and then we just, I think they're expecting a little more than that. We're probably two isn't, doesn't match what the other counties are paying, so I think in the, in the subsequent years or year, we're going to have to increase it a little bit more.
So we can talk about two dollars a cubic yard for 2018?
That's, that would be my feeling.
Okay, I can see that.
I think it's doable if we don't have to buy rock. It's doable, you know, depending on the amount of rock we have to buy. It's doable, you know, depending on the amount of rock we have to buy.
Well, that's what I'm looking at. You know, we've...in 2017, we hauled half as much material as we did in 2016.
That's because they spent most of 2017 repairing flood damage in the southern part of the county.
I'm not being critical of the fact that it happened. I'm using it as a talking point to say, we can potentially haul twice as much as we did this year. And at two dollars a cubic yard, doubling what we did this year is still only thirty-four thousand dollars.
But it'll bring...it'll be more than that, I'm assuming. It'll be more like the gravel number from '16, depending on what the weather does.
Well, I take that back. It would be doubled...okay, doubling the price would make it thirty-four thousand dollars, but that would be hauling the same amount as this year. So then we could double that. So sixty-eight thousand dollars potentially would be doubling the amount at the new two-dollar rate for 2018, just based on what we did this year with flooding, taking that factor out and doubling the hauling that we did. And that would still leave us...what did I say, sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah.
And I think they're still...they only had a hundred again, because he talked about that being the maximum hauling capacity for a given year. So that still leaves us purchasing power at APAC, depending on the price. I know it varies, but it still leaves us purchasing power of about three-quarters of what we spent this year.
I would, you know, I'd like to think and hope that we can get by with the pile we have, too, but...
Okay.
I think, you know, in some areas where we would have dumped rock, they could dump crushed concrete. There are a few of those areas. You know, but there's a lot of talk about the chemicals in the concrete, but the vast majority of that concrete out there is fifty, sixty years old or even more. And chemicals haven't gotten really used a lot around here up until the last twenty years. A little bit of air treatment chemical prior to that, but calciums and stuff like that. You know, you're talking...those type of chemicals are coming off of bridges and state highways and federal highways. They're not being used locally. Occasionally a set retarder or something like that, but not like they do on the highway in bridges.
Okay. And the next thing that I think we need to discuss, well, I would just like to go on record with this little summary here. I wanted to point out two things from when we went over the job descriptions, which I think are very intact, most of them. You know, I think it's our job to look at these every year, and I'm glad that we made that a resolution. I think it's an important function of our duty. Two things I wanted to point out, under the Highway Department personnel, in particular, the equipment operator under motor grader, under essential functions, it says, "Works with citizens and governmental entities in the construction, maintenance, and repair of county roads." And on the back page, under personal relations, it says, "Frequent contact with the general public coworkers and supervisory personnel is expected." And I just wanted to say that those are good additions, good portions of the job description that I think are essential, especially being in a smaller area and with so much mileage to cover, you know, with limited resources. I think that's really good, and I just wanted to go on record saying that those are part of the job description. And if we have a situation where someone is adverse to being in that position, I think that we need to look at that and take it seriously, because if we're gonna be dealing with situations like that in the future, you know, that's why there's a job description, to make sure that that person knows what their function is and what their responsibilities are. I had a proposition. I...we have not discussed in several weeks the offer that was presented by John Grace regarding the nursing home. I think we need to make a decision on that, because every month that we delay, we are potentially missing out on a payment that was offered.
I think we wanted to get Jennifer in here and talk to her about it before we made the decision.
She's on the agenda next Monday, but she has a trial this week, so...
Next Monday.
Well, regardless of the legality, I think it's still something we need to discuss as far as what our options are.
I don't think it's a...my questions to her aren't whether it's legal to do it or not. My question is the alternatives to doing it.
That's what I'm getting at. Regardless of whether or not we would pursue it in the court of law, so to speak, I think I have a solution that we can consider. And basically, the proposition that came before us was to pay approximately fourteen thousand dollars in cash on the debt by increasing the monthly rent payments by four hundred dollars. And that was...I don't know if that included this month or not. So we may have already relinquished one month. But my suggestion would be to go ahead and accept that proposal and take that additional rent payment and at the remainder...or, excuse me, at the turn of the year, assessing the remainder debt, that number, deducting that from the line item budget in the general fund that goes to the expenses.
You mean the maintenance budget?
Yes. I think that would be the least complicated way to basically tie up loose ends and, you know, give the county back what it's due. That gives us accountability to the public to say that we recovered our debt. It's a fair split. You know, we're asking for that particular cash, but in addition, it has the business absorb then its fiscal responsibility to us that had been lacking for several years. And we know, because we were part of that process of the transition of ownership of that business, we know that the new owner was made aware of the situation. This wasn't...you know, there's no disclosure problem here where the new owner can say that there was no awareness of purchasing the debt. So I really think that should be our option. Accept the cash payment and satisfy the remainder of the debt in the line item for the budget for 2018, which gives us a lot of leeway then in our general budget for any, you know, any unexpected expenses, because we were...
I guess I'd be a little concerned about that in one year.
That's fine, too. If you want to split it up, I can...I can understand that.
I still would like to confer with County Attorney about our options.
Our legal options to pursue the debt otherwise?
I think we do have...you know, anytime you do litigations, there are gonna be costs involved. I guess I would like to visit with her.
So if my numbers are correct here, I'm seeing a total debt of thirty-eight thousand five hundred. And there was an offer on the table for fourteen thousand cash, which leaves twenty-four thousand five hundred. And if, like you said, if we split that up into two years, that's decreasing the line item budget that we're spending on the facility by twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for two consecutive years, which I think sounds reasonable. We had already increased that line item, what, two years ago, I believe? So basically, it would be, in essence, decreasing it back to where it was expected to operate a few years prior. Mr. Chairman, did you have comment on that?
No, I have no comment.
Is it your intention to recover the full debt?
I have no comment at this time.
I think we need to talk to...
Oh, I'm definitely advocating to speak about the legal options there. Okay, and I had a point of correction for you, Terry. I misspoke. A few weeks ago, we were discussing the Lincoln County Council on Aging and the Sylvan Senior Center, and I had said that there was not a payment made, that you had brought the minutes from a meeting. I was not at that meeting, so I was unaware of that. However, I've been informed and asked questions since then, and there was a payment made by the Sylvan Senior Center to an attorney who represented people from the Sylvan Senior Center who were charged with the charge of stalking. And there were seven people involved, and they were all charged with stalking by the county coordinator from the Council on Aging. And I believe three or four of these people were senior citizens at the time. And so when this happened, there was a legal process by which they defended themselves, and the Senior Center did choose to support some of that payment through private funds. So I just wanted that clarified. There was not mill levy money spent. There...it was fundraiser money from a private account. And so the organization did spend that money. And I honestly...I didn't realize that that had happened. I wasn't present at the meeting. So my concern, though, is that the Council on Aging, the Lincoln County Council on Aging, does not have private funds. They don't do any fundraising. They are one hundred percent funded with mill levy money. So I think we're looking at a situation where we need to assess the validity there of the situation. I understand that at one point in time, the county bus employee was not a county employee. They were funded separately through the board. And we were told through some kind of process, maybe it was even an audit, an auditing process? I'm not sure. Dawn, do you remember what that was, where we changed...
We had a federal transportation audit, though.
We had a federal transportation audit, and they informed us that we then had to take on that employee as a county employee, that they couldn't be funded.
But that's because we paid all of their expenses, and we did all of their bookkeeping. We did everything associated with it.
Yes. So being that this organization is one hundred percent funded through the county, it brings to question, you know, what an audit may render as far as a decision on how that organization is to be structured. So again, not just for the financial reasons, which there are questions. I mean, people were raising questions about the financial situation of the Council on Aging back when they were researching and trying to obtain information. They were charged with stalking by the person who runs this...well, who was employed, I should say, employed by the council. So that serves as one purpose for question. The other purpose for question would be if we were to do an audit and maybe get some input on how that is to be structured. You know, right now, we have an entity who is refusing to comply with open records, but being one hundred percent funded by the county. And as far as what I understand, that is not...it's not acceptable. So the best thing that we can do is oversee the finances for the following year. You know, I understand you made the point, we can't go back and void any checks or do anything like that as far as what the organization has done previously. But what we can do is make sure that from here going forward, they're in compliance with things that they need to be doing. So given that, I move to require a general accounting principles audit for the Lincoln County Council on Aging prior to dispersing 2018 mill levy funds.
I'm not totally against doing an audit. However, I think it may be necessary to require the Senior Centers to have an audit also, because they're using public money. And I don't mean...I know they have people that look at their books. I don't know how many auditing firms there are in the area that do public. I know there, you know, there are some around Slough and different places. I think we need to...I would like to see a cost estimate for doing the Council on Aging and the Senior Centers.
You mean as a pool, having them pool together, or...
Yeah, I have it all. I think you could get a better...I'm wondering if you can't get a better deal from an auditing firm.
To do?
If they do, let's say they do it a three-year contract or something to do those three entities. And...
Or even a one-time audit, but with three separate... They realize they're doing three separate...
Yeah.
And one's gonna be more time-consuming than the other.
And I don't...yeah, and I don't know what they're gonna require for records from the Senior Centers and, you know, I know, you know, they're... Liz Winkler and Teresa wanted to get everything set up on QuickBooks. And the Senior Centers didn't want to do it, because they were comfortable with it. And I don't blame them one bit. You know, I have QuickBooks in my construction business, and it took me...it took way more time than it did before I had QuickBooks. But they did offer to take...I think they voted at the meeting, I believe, to allow the Senior Centers to continue to do it in the format they were doing it, and then they would convert it to QuickBooks. Is that right, Cynthia? Is that how you understood that? So the Senior Centers are gonna continue to submit their paperwork as they were, and they're gonna attempt to take it from that point, Liz and Teresa, and put it onto the QuickBooks. So, you know, once that goes onto the QuickBooks, I think the audits will be easier, I'm sure. I would think so anyhow. As far as the check goes, I'm not...I'm not trying to do anything to harm the Sylvan Senior Center, but I think the issue comes in on that check is this. There were two people, at least, that were involved in that civil suit that are on the Sylvan Senior Center board. And we also have a sitting county commissioner. And the state has laws, I believe, about gifts, twenty-five dollars, is it?
Yeah. I...I'm just not a hundred percent sure if it triples down to us, but we've always had the same point of we follow their guidelines.
You know, I think that's the sticking point on the check. Private money, private money or public money or whatever, but I think there could be an issue there.
I think it has to be five hundred dollars per individual, from group to individual. You're talking about some kind of campaign finance act or something like that.
Not that...
No, no, it's a gift. You can't accept gifts.
Yeah. State statutes, it does not allow state employees to accept a gift of more than a twenty-five dollar value. The question would be, is whether or not that statute includes other governmental agencies?
I was led to believe that it did, you know, in prior years, that I couldn't accept a gift over twenty-five dollars. Not that I have, but I got a hat once.
Well, regardless, I mean, I don't care. I mean, that's on me. If there's something that's amiss and it falls back on me, I will gladly bear that, whatever that is. I think that it's our job to make sure that that situation is somehow straightened out. I mean, I would consider it alarming that an organization would choose to do an audit and then revoke that choice. That should be a red flag for us and just, you know, we should do what we can to apply the appropriate pressure to have that happen. And if they don't want to do that, that's fine. You know, they can find other means of funding. There's nothing in our...
I don't think that they're...I think I could go to the next meeting and tell them that I think we think they need to have an audit, and I think they did. I don't think they would...I don't think they would disagree with us.
The motion on the floor died for a lack of second. Is there anything else, Alexis?
Well, Terry, would you like to present to them that opinion, that it's the opinion of the board?
I would be more than happy to give them my opinion. And I think that, you know, I'm going to include that the one-time audit include the Senior Centers. And I don't...I don't know what Senior Centers are gonna have to say about it, but I think it's... I don't like spending all the money to do it, but I think it's time to clear the air myself and get them to allow us to do it, so...
Well, I'm in agreement with you. We have two out of three on the board agreeing, so I would say that...
But I think I would prefer to go down and visit with them myself and not order them to do something that does... them to do something that doesn't, you know, I think that, I don't think they have an issue. I think they would do it. They just need the courage to do it.
Well, they obviously have an issue with doing it if they revoked their motion to do it. I mean, that, it was a rescinded...
I think it was over cost. I think it was over the cost, though. Don't you, Cynthia? You were there. I think that was the, when he started, when Mike started talking about the cost of doing it, I think they thought it was excessive.
I thought they didn't get a bid. That was my understanding. They never did receive the bid.
He gave him, he gave him some estimated costs, I believe. He didn't get a bid, but he gave him some estimated costs.
I was under the impression that the bid would only be formatted according to the size and the scope of the organization, which if they didn't have a balance sheet and a profit and loss statement, that they couldn't produce a bid.
I, I'm pretty sure he gave some kind of an estimate, didn't he?
He needed to have two things to give a bid, but that didn't go anywhere because they decided that it would cost too much to have an audit.
That's my question, is who's going to pay for these audits? I mean, where is the money going to come from?
Eventually, it's going to come from the taxpayers.
Well, eventually, but I guess, are the, is the senior center going to pay for their audit, or the Council on Aging going to pay for all the audits, or is the county going to be expected to pick this cost up?
I would say senior centers will pay for it, and it'll come out of their money that they were going to get from the Council on Aging, would be my suggestion, but...
Okay, is there anything else?
I mean, the senior centers have two funding sources. They have public money and they have private money.
Right. Right. But the issue is that the Council on Aging does not have two funding sources. The Council on Aging is one hundred percent funded by taxpayer dollars. The senior centers have their own, okay, Lincoln Senior Center has income and financial maneuverability through their program that does the meals. Sylvan Senior Center does fundraisers, so they have a private account. So, the issue comes back to the Council on Aging is solely responsible to the county.
The Lincoln Senior Center has private account, too.
Right. And, and, yeah, I think they've had donations and things like that to the senior center. But the, the council that was formed to disperse the money, which is actually spending the majority of the money and not dispersing it, that organization is one hundred percent accountable to the county, which makes me question, you know, similarly with the bus board situation, that person being an employee of a separate entity versus the county.
I think the main difference between that is that the Council on Aging is a not-for-profit organization that hires their employee, not us, where the bus board was appointed by us and we paid their employee. They pay their own employee. So, there's a separation.
The bus board's not a 501(c)(3).
But the, the problem still remains that there has not been access to open records. In fact, so much pushback against opening records that they, that the person who has been hired to serve the seniors has been charging them with civil suits, you know, that in and of itself speaks volumes to the fact that they are one hundred percent funded by tax dollars. And if there isn't going to be active oversight, like you said, Dawn, if, if we aren't paying them ourselves as individuals, then the only means that we have to require anything is pre-disbursal of mill levy money. Then, then we put the requirements on so that we know that it's legitimately being funded. Do either of you have, do either of you take issue with the fact that the Council on Aging is spending more money than what they're dispersing to the third parties who are providing the services to the seniors, to the elderly?
Say that again, please.
Do you take issue with the fact that the Council on Aging, as its own separate 501(c)(3), is spending more money than the groups who are being dispersed that money and then providing those services to the elderly?
I, I guess if you're saying what I think you're saying, no, I don't, because they, they do other functions besides just the senior centers. I don't think there was ever any intention for that money to go directly to the senior centers and nothing else.
Oh, well, the way that the, the resolution reads it can be for any program.
Yeah.
A program, though. But there are no programs. The only programs that are being offered are through the senior centers. There are no other programs.
Well, I think it's Council on, Teresa Richards does other things besides the senior centers.
I think she does other things.
She provides counseling to, to people when they have questions on insurance and...
Well, that can be done by...
I know she reviewed my, she used to review my mother's insurance forward to see if there were any better options out there.
Right, that can be done...
I assume she does that for other people.
Yeah, there are multiple people in the area, you know, within driving distance that do that for free. My, my question is that the fact that the, the group that's dispersing the money is spending more money than they're dispersing, regardless of it goes to the senior centers or someone's, you know, if someone wanted to start a new program and requested funding, that would be perfectly admissible under the way the resolution reads. My, my question is, do we take issue with the fact that we are giving money to an organization that spends the majority of the money on its own existence rather than dispersing that money? Because in other counties, the commissioners disperse that money directly from the commission table. They say, okay, senior centers one through five, or, you know, elderly program ABF, we're going to look at your budgets and we're going to either approve them or, you know, partially fund them, et cetera. That is how most other counties do it.
Anything else? Not. Do you have anything else?
Uh, yes. I move to request Attorney General opinion on Lincoln County Attorney's budget compliance with KSA seventy-five dash forty-three oh one A, I believe, that needs an A, and seventy-five forty-three oh four regarding potential conflict of interest with O'Hare Law LLC.
Do I have a second? Motion will die for a lack of second. Anything else for this board? Norman?
Yes. I walked into courthouse this morning, I see your transportation buses are plugged into electricity. Are they on timers for engine heaters? Same way with your county trucks up to the sheds and stuff. If you sit and watch one of them meter, you plug one of them in twenty-four hours and let it run, watch that meter run. You've got a cost issue here. So, would that be the, some department heads that check and see that those are unplugged for the weekend?
We can sure find out, Norman.
We can find out, I don't know.
Well, it's costing money. Uh, and another one, I talked to the Sling County engineer, and the last bid they had on their gravel issue, it cost fifteen dollars and ninety cents a ton to deliver it to their site, so...
To deliver it to their stockpile?
Yeah. And the state is already looking down the road that either we fix the roads or we don't. If we do, we're going to have to import rock from our state. They're looking at stockpile sites around the state. So, yeah, that's what I had. Oh, one other. Ever brought up the issue of lift requirements? When I was in the military, thirty-five pounds is the maximum you're supposed to be able to lift. Then you go get assistance. It's a health issue, your back. If your back goes out, you ain't got nothing. So, that's all I got.
We do on a regular basis on the ambulance. We've asked them to ask for lift assistance, and, and the fire departments and the rescue squad guys have been very good about, you know, we've, there are some rather large people around, but you can't pick them up. And you try to carry them out of a house on a sixty-pound cot.
But if you don't carry them out, then what? Then you're liable because you didn't render assistance.
And then you got to get them out.
Oh, I wanted to bring...
That probably isn't the perfect way of doing it, but...
I wanted to bring up one thing. There, I, I visited with quite a few interesting people this week, so thanks for sending me to the conference. I enjoyed it. And I'm only bringing this up because you reminded me, but I thought it was very important. In one particular county that I visited with, their county-funded EMS self-imposed a, a district, a, I don't know how you, how you word it. They, they self-imposed a location, and so, they created this, this boundary line, and anything outside of that boundary line, which was obviously the central location, was where their EMS station was, okay? Anything outside of that, they have deemed it necessary to call one of the outlying centers, which are not paid, and they're just manned through volunteer staffing. And I would highly suggest that we don't ever consider that. It's been a terrible situation for them, and I'm just bringing it up because you reminded me when you said about lifting for EMS. It's just not efficient, you know?
Some, some areas of Sling County have an ambulance, I don't know if they actually have any, they have first responders that respond. They don't transport.
But they go to the scene?
They go to the scene and take, I'm going to give you a for instance, from Salina to Gypson. You know, I think those people out there are EMTs, and they do have the equipment, they just don't transport.
Right.
But, you know, they could possibly save a life.
But you could stabilize it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that concept.
If they don't transport, is my understanding.
I was just given the end of the story where it's, it's been a point of contention because someone's, you know, one mile on the outside of this imaginary border, that we're already paying for coverage, and then the volunteers have to leave work, or, you know, they're not able to respond as quickly even with that less travel distance. So, I just wanted to bring that up because I thought it was interesting, so.
I've read of different things like that, where AMRs hired to do a certain radius, and then everything outside of that radius is...
Mm-hmm. That was the word I was looking for.
Commission will stand adjourned until Monday, right? Monday at eight o'clock.
Is that right? Are we coming?
Not until December.
Yeah. Monday, we come...